For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. The next item of business is the approval of the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
Approved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, addition, deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is citizens' comments. We have Ms. Jewell English. Would you please approach the podium? Welcome.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the Fairview Titans junior team. We have the opportunity to represent Fairview in Knoxville at a tournament called Rocky Top, where there's 21. Last year, there were teams from 21 different states. The junior Titans have gone 9-0 this year. We have a playoff game this week, and hopefully, with the Lord's blessing, we'll win and be going to the Super Bowl the following weekend in Charlotte. So we're looking for some sponsorship from the city to help take the kids there. There are 16 of the team members that would like to go and represent Fairview, and I think it'd be a great opportunity to show what Fairview has done with our rec ball. Franklin has had teams that have gone, as well as Bellevue, so it'd be a great opportunity for us to be there.
What kind of monies? You say 16 team members?
Yes. We've averaged about, yeah, we've averaged about $300 per child. And we've gotten some local sponsorship already from some of the companies here in town, the businesses.
Excellent. Who would they contact if they have an interest? Would it be the public or people here in the room tonight?
They can contact the Fairview Titans, Avion Black, who is the coach, and Randy Johnson has the letter from him in regards to contacting, and the checks can be made payable to Fairview Titans.
Okay. All right. Would you like to share a phone number or anything, in case anyone is...
They can give me a call, 703-447-4261.
61. Ms. English?
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to share with us?
Nope, that's it.
Where's the ballgame this weekend?
This weekend, it's 12 o'clock at Fairview High School.
And how, and when did you say the turnaround for the money? When do you need it?
We'll take it up till the day we leave.
Okay. And remind me what day that is, where I can write that down.
I want to say it's the weekend of November 21st. It's the weekend prior to Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So we leave Friday afternoon to head to Knoxville and are guaranteed at least two games.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we wish you luck.
Thank you.
And the teammates, thank you. Next item is awards and recognition. We have this evening the Fairview Chamber of Commerce. Would they like to approach the podium for their presentation? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two presentations that we would like to, it's always a pleasure to be able to pass out these big fat checks. And first of all, I'd like to call up Major Foltz here with the Fairview High School, JROTC. Major, how are you? We, this is, I've been involved in this Nature Fest for two years now, and your men have been invaluable for helping us with getting the, about 70 hay bales, I think, this straw bales, but, you know, the, for seeding and the hay rides and moving the picnic tables back and forth, both before the festival and after it's over. I mean, it's a lot of work, a lot of heavy lifting, and without them, we would, I would have to spend about $3,000 for the chiropractor if I didn't have them around. So, but we really appreciate that. And so we have a, let me see which check I've got here. We have a big fat check to the Fairview High School, JROTC, in amount of $500. We have some board members here with us, too. Jillian Walker, would you like to come up here? We want to get a picture. My daughter Jessica Cherry. Do we have any other board members with us? Okay, today, that's okay there. Come on, we're working. And anyway, would you, with shape, and get a good picture there? Is that good? Good photo op for the paper? Channel 18, all right? Okay.
Congratulations.
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, I can only express extreme gratitude to the Chamber for giving us this generous donation, but I'd also like to point out that, you know, our program is centered on citizenship, integrity, and service to others. And the benefit that we get, not only monetarily, but the benefit that our cadets receive from being able to participate in this type of activity, it's invaluable. There's no way that we could capture what they have done and the benefit that they have personally gained. So this is just a win-win for us, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. And there's the real check. And please do put this up, just make sure I give you the right one. Put that up in your, in your room there, wherever y'all meet. Okay? And also, for the second big fat check, we have the City of Fairview Parks Department. Do we have a representative from the Parks Department here?
Yeah.
Okay. Need another photo op, so can we get the same gang up here? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate all the hard work that the, that your staff did, including Commissioner Russell, who always said, can you raise your hands, please, everybody that was there? I know, it's our city manager, Wayne Hall, was there. Most of you were there, I know you were. Don't be bashful. And you were working the crowd for us, we really appreciate that. We, we had twice as many vendors this year as we had last year. We had more activities for people. The weather didn't cooperate with us, but, you know, you always take a chance with outdoor activities and do that. And, you know, Jessica spent today and also tomorrow a festival cenar that's being held by the people that conducted the banana pudding festival. They were pros at this, and they've only done it five years, five or six years, and she's learning a lot of stuff. But anyway, the, we really appreciate all the effort that's been put into this and the help that we've gotten. As you know, this is our major fundraising effort that we do that funds the chamber, and so it puts a lot, there's a lot of effort that goes into this. So we really appreciate all the help. So there's the, there's the big fat check. Let's get a picture of that. All right. Thank you very much. All right, and that's for the Parks Department. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank the Chamber for doing what they do for the city and JROTC for participating in a lot of events in the, in the park and doing what they do for us. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. We also want to mention Sergeant Hill. He was making sure everybody was where they were supposed to be and chasing out all the, all the vagabonds, right? No, I'm just kidding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is the public announcements. Would there be any from the board this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. The emission testing every Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 till noon. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. We have quite a few things going on throughout the community. I would be amiss if I didn't mention the Friends of Bowie Park and the events that are taking place, the Grace Works. There's something, going into November, there's things all the time, so keep a watch of how you can put your hands and your heart to work over the holiday season that we're coming upon. There are several nonprofits and places throughout the community where volunteerism is desperately needed. So if you have ability to look at different Facebook sites or in the newspaper, there's a section that talks about upcoming events. So I'll leave it at that and not try to run through the dates and times unless someone has something specific they'd like sure, make sure the public knows about.
I do believe there is the pancake breakfast in the bazaar at the middle school, and I believe it's this Saturday. I think 8:30, 10:30 is the pancakes, so, but please look at the paper. I'm not 100% sure.
Lots of things taking place, so we just ask everyone to get involved in this holiday season. It's always a blessing, not only to be a blessing, but you get blessed helping others. Moving on, we have approval of the minutes. 6A, approval of the minutes from the October 16th, 2014 public hearing.
Approved.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6B, approval of the minutes from the October 16th, 2014 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Move approved.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to all business, we have all business. A, discuss and/or take action on second reading Bill 2014-26, ordinance number 484, I'm sorry, 848.
It's an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Code Title 5, Municipal Finance and Taxation, Chapter 6, Adequate Facilities Tax, Section 5-602, tax established. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion?
Mr. Pantry.
Just as a reminder, Mayor, that's the second reading of the bill that, in essence, the only thing that it does is raise the adequate facilities tax for commercial from 50 cents to 75 cents. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business this evening, we have a presentation by Ms. Jessica Wilson with TDOT on the multi-use path grant. Mr. Hubner?
Mayor, we are happy to have Ms. Wilson here tonight. I would say we appreciate you coming earlier and visiting with us, Mr. Hall and I, and looking over the, a lot of things we have in, in Fairview. We appreciate Department of Transportation's help on everything. This particular program, and all the things, but we're, we're looking at a possible multi-use path that would be between Cumberland Avenue and, what, hey?
Glen Haven.
Glen Haven. And a multi-use path, and she'll explain, I'm sure, briefly what that is, but we just feel like this, we can add to our pedestrian and bicycle system and do it in a safe way. And the grant, she's, she's talking, I noticed she didn't bring a big check, like I hoped. But, you know, it's a, it's 95-5, so I got, that, that kind of got our attention. So.
Oh, thank you. And good evening, and thanks for having me out. Transportation specialist with TDOT, I've been there for 10 years, which is crazy because I swear I just graduated high school last year. But, anyway, Frank and Wayne had invited me out, I guess it was about a month or so, to talk about the multimodal access grant, which I oversee at TDOT, and kind of look around the community and see what opportunities there were. And so we drove around, and I noticed, you know, from an outsider's perspective coming into Fairview, it's kind of, it's a very linear city, but then you've got a couple of nodes. You've got City Hall, you've got the area with Walmart, and then you've got the schools a little bit further down. And there are sidewalks for parts of those sections, but they don't connect. And so one of the things that the multimodal access grant at TDOT does is looks at trying to fill in those gaps. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to keep turning back to them to switch. So, again, where are the missing links? And this is obviously not Fairview. This is Nashville, Harding Place. I don't know if you guys are very familiar with that. This was just a limited access road at one point in time, a lot of commercial and residential activities sprung up since that point in the 60s. And then all of a sudden, you don't have the pedestrian infrastructure, and so you have situations where this poor lady's having to walk, you know, to the left of the guardrail in a ditch. Next slide, please. This is in Columbia. Again, it was James Campbell Boulevard, originally built as a bypass around downtown Columbia. Then all kinds of development comes out to the bypass. You have the mall, you can see Krogers. Again, no pedestrian infrastructure, so you see this guy in a motorized wheelchair having to use the shoulder. So that's one of the things this grant program I manage looks at, is trying to fill those gaps. Next slide, please. So the multimodal access grant came about two years ago. We have a lot of federal funding for pedestrian activities, but we didn't have any kind of pot of state funding. And so the reason that's important is because any federal funds has a lot of strings attached, frankly. It's about 80% federal match, 20% local, but we still had communities coming up to us saying, we can't afford the 20% match for this pedestrian sidewalk or anything. So we come up with, we set aside 30 million over three years to kind of form this program for smaller communities that might not have a 20% match, to still build sidewalks and that kind of infrastructure. And so it's 95% state funding, 5% local match, which is kind of a steal in the grant world. You don't really see that many 95% state funding projects. And so the eligible activities include infrastructure for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users. Next slide, please. One of the, some of the things we look at, as far as when we score these projects, is safety. We look at connectivity to different land uses. Again, connecting those schools to Walmart, Fred's, connecting that to City Hall. Is it identified in a local plan? Is the project ready? Does that, that means basically, are we going to have to go out and buy a lot of right-of-way? From what I understand, the project that you all are looking at is about a half a mile section between the Fred's and Walmarts and the schools. I think a lot of that is, it would be within the state right-of-way. So you don't have to buy right-of-way, which is really good. And then also, we look at economic development. What's the potential to really have an economic impact in a community? Next slide, please. This is an example of a project we funded last year. This is Jackson, Tennessee. You can see the sidewalk in the left-hand side, and then when you go a little bit past that, it opens up into a ditch. And you can't really see from the picture, but there's a sign on the right side, and that's actually a bus stop. So people are having to kind of stand in that ditch waiting for the bus, which, I used to ride the bus from work to home, and there's nothing like working, putting in a hard day of work, and you come home and you get dropped off in a ditch. So that was, that's an example of a project we funded in Jackson. And on the other side of the ditch is actually a big medical center, so you've got a lot of housing around there, too. Next slide, please. This is Lexington, Tennessee, out in kind of southwestern Tennessee. Again, this is a state highway. You've got a lot, you've got a Walmart, drive just beyond that intersection, you've got Sonic, all kinds of restaurants, businesses. There's, when I went down there, I saw kids walking down the side of that, that highway, which is just terrifying to me. So again, that's another project we funded using the multimodal access grant. Next slide, please. So there's tremendous potential for your community, and unfortunately, the slide is not going to show up here, but basically, what it says is, of all trips, the majority of trips are actually less than three miles. Okay, it's starting to show up now. Next, please. 17% of those are less than a mile, and of those 17% of trips, about half of those are driven. So what does this mean for your community? Next slide, please. They've done a lot of studies, Centers for Disease Control, that says how far will people walk? So about 46% will walk a mile to church or school, and about 35% will walk to, a mile to work. Next slide, please. So I went and looked at Fairview in Google Earth, and I was just curious. It's like, because when I drove through it, it seemed like it just took forever to get from one end to the other side. So I was like, how, how far is it really? So I went and Googled Earth, and I measured it from, there's a little red dot in the lower corner, which is where the schools are, and I measured it to City Hall, which is actually only two miles, which kind of surprised me. And so remember that slide where we said a majority of people walk, you know, a couple of miles to school or work? And you can see, unfortunately, it's kind of blocked out by that, that box, but there's all kinds of residential development. You can see that huge potential to take some of those short trips and take those off the highway system and hopefully to kind of decrease congestion. I'm sure when the schools are in, this is just true everywhere, the traffic is awful. That's just the way it is everywhere. So if you could take some of those short trips to school off the highway system and put those onto a multi-use path, you know, that would be a great opportunity. And so Frank had mentioned a multi-use path in your quote. What is that? Basically, it's just like a sidewalk, except a little bit larger. It's about 10 foot wide, whereas traditional sidewalk is about five foot wide. So it allows kind of, it allows, you know, better access for pedestrians. You've got, you know, strollers, you've got people walking dogs, bicycles. So it allows a little bit more room. And also, I think one of the things you guys were looking at is there would be a buffer between the actual highway and the path, which is great, because I noticed some of the sidewalks around here are right up against the road. And while it's great that you have sidewalks, I know from my experience, I don't like really walking on a five-foot path in between trucks going by. So it's kind of nice to have that buffer. Next slide, please. So benefits of multimodal access, again, you know, improved safety, transportation connectivity, that main point right there, reducing those short-distance motor vehicle trips to save fuel, free up highway capacity for long-distance trips. Next slide, please. So we looked at National Association of Realtors, and keep going. So a lot of people, when they look at a community, they look, they want to live in suburban neighborhood with a mix of houses, shops, and businesses. They want to be able to walk to places. Next slide. Another four in 10 would prefer rural area. Next point, please. And then only one in 10 said they would prefer suburban neighborhood with houses only. I know this is true for myself. I just, my family, we just bought a house about a year ago. We kind of, we live out north, near Nolansville, but we live across from a place where we can walk to an ice cream shop, which is actually a really bad thing. But I know, I have a two-year-old son, and it's just the best thing to put him in his little wagon and go and get ice cream. So that's, when you're looking at community attracting people to live in, you really want those places where he can walk and go do those things with your family. Next slide, please. Again, this Realtor survey also found, keep going, about seven times more people said the neighborhood where a house is located is a bigger consideration deciding where to live than the size of the house. And again, community factors such as high-quality public schools, which you guys have amazing schools, and then sidewalks and places to take walks are among the top community characteristics people consider important when deciding where to live. And, you know, this is so true, and especially after, remember, you know, as our population ages in general, we have to have better places where they can get around and not have to necessarily depend on automobile. But saying that, I also recognize, we're not trying to advocate taking a car away, because when it's raining, I ain't getting out on the sidewalk, I guarantee you that. But, anyway, that's just a little bit overview of the program I work with, and Frank, if you have anything else to add, please do.
Well, we appreciate you coming and explaining it. We appreciate your, your help. We're trying to be as livable as we can, and we've got a lot of interest in, in our pedestrian, you know, with our park and all of the pedestrian use there, as well as bicycles and horseback riding and everything. We have, we really are a walkable community and to help us with our connectivity, even though we still have some more connectivity to do, of course. But we really appreciate you coming and explaining it and doing a great job, so.
Thank you. If you guys have any questions, feel free to, my contact information was up there. You can contact Frank, he can get in touch with you. That's no problem, so.
I do have a question for clarity.
Oh, sure.
For either Mr. Hubner or yourself. We currently have a grant in place that we've been awarded. Is this what you're speaking about?
This is a little bit different. So you guys have a Safe Route to School grant, which is...
We have a multimodal also that...
Yeah, we do. It's on, oh, frankly.
We currently have a multimodal grant?
It's a sidewalk.
Oh, the transportation alternatives?
The transportation alternatives.
Okay.
So is that different?
Yeah, it's very confusing. There's different federal pots of money. We have Safe Route to School, we have transportation alternatives. Those are the two federal pots of money, which have a much larger match, which are about 20% match. Then you have my grant program, which is state funds, which is the 95%, state funds, 5% local match. It gets really confusing.
Good. Thanks for that clarity.
There's a lot of different pots of funding, and, yeah.
Well, I'm still confused. So this is, this is a new one that we're not currently working on, or is this one of the ones that we're currently working on? It's a new one?
No, this is new. You guys have not applied for this.
Right. Right, we haven't. But we want to apply this time, because it's a, it's a good, it's a great program.
Is there an individual cap?
$1 million, so $950,000 is the maximum that the state would pay out, but I believe when you had sent me a cost estimate, it was much less than that, correct?
$400,000 roughly for that.
I guess my question would be, why wouldn't we try to go ahead and make the entire length from where we currently stopped due to the widening and then from there to Glen Haven? Because to my knowledge, we don't have anything going on that. Am I correct or incorrect in that?
Are you speaking about from Glen Haven to Tractor Supply?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have anything going there. We were just kind of hoping that we would get the turning lane and the sidewalks eventually in that area, but so far, we've not had any luck at that.
But wouldn't it be beneficial if we could figure out a way to pay our 5%? Wouldn't it be beneficial to go ahead since that would be approximately the same distance? So we're still talking under $950,000 probably. Wouldn't it be beneficial, go ahead and ask? Maybe we could do it now with this?
Commissioner?
Even before we got widened.
Right. Commissioner, and Jessica, please help me with this, but I, I understood in this grant program that if we do it, to do a project, it has to be one continuous project, it can't be, it can't be split.
You could do phases, but it's a very competitive program, so it's very unlikely that we'll give the cap of a million to
Right.
to one entity, because we're, you know, we're trying to spread it out across the state as much as we can.
But in your, in your...
But you could technically, yes, you could apply.
Yeah, but do we, if we ask for the million, do y'all just say yes or no for the total ask, or do you come back and say, no, we'll only fund this much?
We will come back and say, no, hey, we like this project, but we only want to fund this portion. And then in some, we say we want to fund the whole thing, because we see, so it's embarrassing.
I, I think we'll ask for the whole thing, and then if they fund half of it, great. If they don't, if they fund it all, then we're better off, because the other part of TDOT that deals with widening of the highways moves very slowly. And, you know, I'm not trying to create more work, but it seems to me that there's no downside to asking for the whole thing, and then if we only get half of it, we only get half of it.
I agree.
Right.
I did have a question. Go ahead.
Okay. Is there a time limit to use the grant by? I mean, what kind of time frame? I know that some of them are shorter than others.
Yeah, this one's a little short. We basically, once, if your project is selected, once we get a contract out to you guys, which unfortunately can actually take a while, but once the contract is executed, you have 18 months to get it to construction, and then 18 months, an additional 18 months to get it constructed. So it's about three years, once you have an executed contract.
And then, one more question. So once we start, and it'll, it'll be three years, when will the money start coming into play? So...
So if you had executed, if you got awarded, it would probably be like a month or two to get a contract, and then once you have an executed contract, you'll start getting what are called notice of proceeds, and that's when you would start getting reimbursed for any work at that point.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be like you've got reimbursed at the end.
Okay. And let's say we ask for the full amount, but then something would come along and we're like, ah, that's, you know, could we go back and only take a portion, or, you know?
It would just depend, I mean, if, if the project made sense to scale it down, then that wouldn't be an issue, but if you're saying, we're going to scale it down, but we're only going to do like a couple feet, and it doesn't make any sense where it's at, then we would say, no, that doesn't make any sense.
Okay. Great. Super. Thank you.
It's only, it's only 50,000.
We're focusing on walkability and the ability to have a healthy community, so this fits right in there. Thank you.
Great.
Anything else?[1798.41]
Thank you for coming, Ms. Hubbard.
Thank you.
So I believe the board, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, we're actually moving forward with a plan to give them a total package of close to the $950 cap, with the possibility of breaking it down into sections, so that they know, well, maybe we'll just give them half a million to do this, instead of this right here or the whole thing. So they'll have an option of how far we can go with it. Am I close?
Well, I, I mean, I think you asked for the whole enchilada, and then if they want to give you the chips and salsa, you'd be happy with that.
I just want to make sure they know that what this section's going to do, if we ask for one, that from here to here, we can do $300,000. From here to here, it'd be $600,000. From here to here, it'd be $950,000.
Yeah. I mean, a million, they gave us, if they approved the project for $1 million, which pretty much should cover the whole thing, given the distances, that's, our buy-in's $50,000. And that's, that's, oh, that would be just outstanding to be able to do the whole thing for $50,000.
Yeah. My only concern is the widening, you know, hate to do it and then have to turn around. But it's just, it's dangerous, and we have issues, and we have people walking it anyway. And like you said, I'm 100 percent that is a great grant, good find.
Yeah.
I think it would be very valuable.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Nope. Moving on. B, discuss and undertake action on planning commission recommendation for the rezoning application for the property located 7161 Cox Pike from an RS40 to a Town Center overlay district. Owners, Richard and Denise McCord. Are they required to be present?
No, ma'am. This is just the authorization from the board for me to prepare the instruments. That's from item B through H.
Do we need to do them all individually?
I would, because it keeps it clear.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
The only thing I would ask for the citizens, can I explain the rezoning or have some-
We have a visual.
A visual. Okay.
For the purpose for the public, we have a visual of the Town Center overlay. We'll put that on the screens. This is a section of property off of Highway 100 going down Cox Pike. This plan was introduced and voted on many years ago. I don't know if it's dated. You will recognize that some of the things have, that are here currently are not on the plan.
What you see there in color is the Town Center overlay for the east neighborhood.
For residential.
I mean, west neighborhood.
For residential. Yes.
But the property here, as you can see, it's in this, I can't see around. The apartment, the commercial apartment, the residential, consolidating the Town Center overlay.
And for clarification, the property is currently zoned residential.
Right.
It is a proposed land use of the Town Center overlay. So the actions that the planning commission is doing currently is recommending that all of this property fits within the Town Center overlay, and that they are requesting that zoning to be changed. So obviously, maybe projects will come-
Right.
-once it's rezoned.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right.
So in our proposed land use, it says that this is what's been planned, and they're asking now to move forward. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Ma'am, I'd just like to emphasize, this is the same for everything through A through H.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
And as addressed by the attorney, we'll be going through each one of them. There are seven parcels.
Okay. And just for clarification, you contacted all the individuals and they, yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
In answering that question, what we did was, we had a, we had a meeting with all the property owners. We actually had a few more than these, and just sort of explained what the overlay district was all about. And then each individual property owner, they made the decision to ask for it after they'd had it explained to them. So-
That's great.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's not, it's their agreement, for sure, for sure.
Right. Well, and I just wanted to clarify, because I've received a lot of phone calls. You know, people thinking, what's going on? And that's, you know, I just wanted to make sure everybody realized this was something that these property owners had agreed to do to help us get the zoning correctly in the overlay.
Any other comments?
If I might just-
Oh, yes.
Normally, we have an ordinance that says that anyone who has business to conduct before any board or any tribunal of the city has to have it, either themselves or their representative here. That is not applicable to this tonight. There's a reason that they don't have to be here. They're welcome to be here if they want. But they don't have to be here, not because this does not really involve them directly in a decision process. It's a process between this board and authorizing me to only prepare the instruments. It has nothing to do with whether it ultimately passes or not.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, discuss undertake action on planning commission recommendation for rezoning application. Property located 7159 Cox Pike from RS40 to Town Center Overlay District. Roger and Debbie Lampley.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. You can take the visual down. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. D, discuss undertake action on planning commission recommendation for rezoning, of rezoning application of property located at 7119 Cox Pike from RS40 to Town Center Overlay District. Elton and Deborah Hall, owners.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item E, discuss undertake action on planning commission recommendation for rezoning application for property located 7151 Cox Pike from RS40 to Town Center Overlay District. Elton and Deborah Hall, owners.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? F, discuss undertake action on planning commission recommendation for rezoning application for property located 7114 Wiley Circle from RS40 to Town Center Overlay District. Roger, Debbie Lampley, owners.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item G, discuss undertake action on planning commission recommendation for rezoning application for property located 7112 Wiley Circle from RS40 to Town Center Overlay District. Roger and Debbie Lampley, owners.
Move to approve. Second.
First and second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? H, discuss undertake action on planning commission recommendation for rezoning application for property located 7169 Cox Pike from RS40 to Town Center Overlay District. Margie McCord, owner.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number I, discuss undertake action on loan agreement from First Bank for the resurfacing grant. Cantrell?
Thank you, ma'am. This is the loan agreement between the City of Fairview and First Bank in case it's needed to secure the backup money or the city's portion of the grant that we're currently negotiating with the state. I think they already have a signed contract from the state. Is that correct? What this is, is just, it's a standard loan agreement. I've reviewed it and had several conversations with the attorney representing the bank. I did suggest a few changes, which they agreed to. There wasn't anything about the mechanics of the loan. It was just some of the verbiage that I wanted to be sure it was acceptable to them, acceptable to us. And there wasn't any thing that needed to be added to it. I would like for the board, when you consider this, to consider in your motion, allowing, if you agree to the loan agreement and pass it, allow the mayor to sign any ancillary documents that needs to go with this. One thing that I do remember that is not here tonight is the actual note that secures the loan. And it's just a normal type of loan, but it has to be signed by the mayor on behalf of the city, lists the amount and the interest rates and this kind of stuff. I do want, and I'm sure all of you remember this, but I'm going to say it again for the benefit of the citizens, if, when the work's going on, if the grant money comes in at the, at the rate that we hope it does for the reimbursement of funds, we may never have to make this loan. It's just in case something happens, and let's say that some grant loan payment doesn't come in for three months, then the person that did the work's going to have to be paid. And that's what it's solely for. We've got a good interest rate. They have been most cooperative. The date had to change, and they sent us a new letter of commitment. I do have one thing here that doesn't require approval of the board, but I want for everybody to know upfront and sort of absolute clarity and, and they, one of the things, one of the requirements in the loan agreement is that I have, I have to write an opinion letter to the bank stating that the, that the loan complies with Title IX, Chapter 21, Parts I, II, and V of Tennessee Code Annotated. And I have reviewed those. And I don't mind writing the letter, but before I write a letter like that, I'm going to review them and make absolutely sure that we are in compliance. And we are in compliance with those sections that apply to this type loan. There's some stuff in there about selling bonds and some other stuff that I wasn't really concerned about, because this is not a bond. And I have prepared that letter, and it will go to the bank with the loan. I reviewed it with the attorney for the bank, and he's acceptable, acceptable for the bank as far as he's concerned. I will tell you, just for some interesting comment, Title IX, Chapter 21, Parts I, II, and V must contain at least 75 or 80 statutes, and about 10 of them applies to this. It made for some interesting reading, but I made sure that I put in the letter that we complied with those sections of the statutes that's applicable to this loan. I'm not going to commit anything about bonds, because we're not doing those and some other things. But that's where we stand. And I would ask the board, if you authorize the loan agreement, to also authorize the mayor signing the ancillary agreements. Like, if we have to have a cover letter and the note that we need to fill in and get on to them. I think that is the only thing that's really out there, other than, have we gotten authorization from the state for the, to accrue this debt? Okay, but it's not back yet. Okay. So we'll have plenty of time. The mayor may need to come by and sign a couple of documents. We'll get those ancillary documents filled out. But I feel good about the loan itself. I don't have any problem with, with the agreement.
Motion to approve the loan agreement and authorize the mayor to sign any ancillary documents necessary to perfect the documents.
Second.
Discussion. I will ask if the updates on the project.
I was going to do this at city manager's comments, but this would be a good time. The bid opening will be the 18th. It'd already been sent out the bid to three newspapers, one being The Observer, one being The Tennessean. Brandy, I failed to remember who the third one is.
It was a minority paper.
Minority paper, okay. But the bid opening is scheduled for 1:00 PM on the 18th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item J, discuss undertake, excuse me, discuss and take action on Resolution 17-14.
It's a resolution to adopt a stabilization plan for the City of Fairview, Tennessee. Move for approval.
Second.
First and second. Discussion.
Mr. Priscilla, anything to add?
I would turn it over to our CFO and Ms. Brooks, if she's here. I don't, oh, she's hiding behind Mr. Crutcher. So they, they're the ones that crafted the document. I endorsed the document, but they, they're the ones that crafted it. It'd probably be better to answer the questions.
Nothing's changed since the last time, as far as I can tell. Is there anything added to add?
It reads the same way as it did last time.
That's why I-
Any question?
Sorry. Apologize, allergies. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item K, discuss and take action on Bill 2014-30.
It's an ordinance establishing a fund balance policy for the City of Fairview, Tennessee. Move for approval.
Second. We have first and second. Discussion.
I think there has been a couple of minor word changes on this one, hasn't there, Tom? But it didn't change the meaning. The, the cut stayed the same.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions?
So the timetable stayed the same?
Yes.
I believe this is a great start, and I do appreciate the diligence of the people that put forth effort. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item L, discuss and take action on Bill 2014-31.
It's an ordinance to aid in establishing a healthy workplace for the employees of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by addition of, to the municipal code Title IV, a new chapter in section, Chapter 5, Section 5-101, Healthy Workplace Act. Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Cantrell?
Thank you, ma'am. In the last session of the legislature, which was the 108th convention for them, excuse me, my throat just hurt. I couldn't talk. And, but it's passed public chapter number 997, which is codified as, in Tennessee Code Annotated, as sections 50-1-501, 50-1-502, 50-1-503. A little bit of an interesting history to this thing. Tennessee was, is the first state to pass this, to pass an order, a statute of this nature that deals, its official title is Healthy Workplace Act. The unofficial title is the Anti-Bullying Act. What it basically does is sets out a section that's different from some of the others that state and federal, the legislation cross over such things as sexual harassment, race harassment, this type of thing. This more specifically deals with just the bullying. Like, it doesn't have to be beating someone up. It's like if you verbally abuse this person and, on a consistent basis, before supervisors and before his fellow cohorts is, is equals. It creates a, another path for them to seek retribution in the form of monetary compensation. The reason that I brought this to the board tonight, to explain what it is and ask that you pass the resolution, I mean, pass the ordinance, I'm sorry, is because the legislature, when they enacted this, tasked some agencies that everybody's familiar with to come up with a model policy that can be adopted by municipalities across the state. And the people that was tasked with coming up with this has to have this by March 1st, 2015. And the people that was tasked to come up with this model policy that can be adopted as the Tennessee Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations, more commonly known as and familiar as TACIR, that it's going to also be developed, with the model policy is to be developed in consultation with the Department of Human Resources.
with the Department of Human Resources and interested municipality and county organizations. Anyone, I guess, who wants to sign up and get in contact with one of these organizations, as long as they are an organization within the county or the municipality, would be free to do so. The Tennessee Municipal League, which we all know as TML, the Tennessee County Services Association, which is known as CTAS. So you can see there's going to be a lot of people working on this. There's going, all these entities have legal staffs, and they're going to be working on it. What concerned me a great deal was two things. Number one, what are the municipalities supposed to do between the time they pass this and March the 1st, when they're supposed to have the model? Now, the reason I'm interested in that is if someone files a, they also said you could come up with your own model policy, which I doubt many people will after this thing comes out, they may make some adaptations. But the reason to me that it's very important that we have something in the meantime is if you have a policy, a municipality has a policy, notwithstanding the part of the Tort Claims Liability Act 292205, which removes the immunity of the municipalities, the state, the government, from employee lawsuits. They said, notwithstanding that, if you have your own policy, and if you're not an active contributor, I can't see any board that's going to pass a policy that said, you know, this is ridiculous, but we pass policies, policy that says this month Parks Department's going to harass Coats Department. If you did that kind of stuff, you're not going to get it. But if you have a policy in place and you get a lawsuit filed against the city for this happening in that city, the city would be immune from the lawsuit for intentional infliction of mental anguish. And that's the one where the money comes in on these type things because not many cities, you may have some fights, but not many cities have actual physical confrontations over something that's said to them. But unless you had knowledge that it was going to happen, or somebody had directed somebody to do this, it was in a chain of authority to do that, if you've got a policy in place, then you're going to be immune from those type things. If you don't have a policy in place, you're not going to be immune because it specifically deals with that. The person who is doing it, they make no, they make no effort to make them immune. You're going to be liable for your actions as an individual if you do this. But if, my thought was, I don't pretend to be creating a policy for MTS or anybody other than the city, but I wanted to get something in place to cover that time between, before the, should be before, the model policy comes out. And I thoroughly expect that when that policy comes out and you have a chance, I have a chance to review it, I'll go with the city manager, and we'll come back with a new model policy that will probably be a whole lot thicker and have a whole lot more in it than mine does. But what I want to do is protect this city to the best of my ability between now and that comes out. You can't do any research on it because nobody's passed this except Tennessee. But what I propose to do is if we can get the resolution passed, then I'm going to get with the city manager and we'll, he, I suggested to him tonight that he put out a directive to the whole city, might even want to do a mail-in to all the employees that says this is going to be the policy, it won't be the policy, this is, the city won't tolerate this type of behavior, and there will be another policy that will come out once the, the model policy has been issued by the state of Tennessee. But that gives us some coverage. I had a discussion of my own with several lawyers that, on a joint telephone conversation about this, and the conclusion was, I included in this ordinance everything that the statute referred to. What the effect's going to be, it's kind of like when they came out with some of the legislation when it first gets out, and no other state has anything like this that you could rely on for, says, okay, if we don't have this in Tennessee, the best thing I've got to go on is, you know, Arizona does this. That's better than I think. But in this instance, I think's about all we've got at this time. But I sincerely believe that making a sincere effort to do this and putting out a temporary policy until we get the other to go with certainly would satisfy the intent of the legislature that you took some action to keep this from happening. And I think if, if that did happen, that until this comes out, and it'll be a whole lot more detail than even the statute is, because it's kind of like an IRS regulation. My friend Commissioner Priscilla loves this. They do, I think, 28 volumes in the USCA about what the tax laws are, and another 35 or 40 on the regs to tell you how, what the statute says. And I think this is what's going to happen with this. There'll be a lot more direction in, in the model policy. But at this time, I'd like to pass this so that if something happens between now and March the 1st, and these things tend to come out on the 20th or the 15th, they very seldom meet the deadline, that we'll have something to at least arguably say, we tried to do something that met the legislative intent until this model policy comes out. That's the reasons, the whole reason for the ordinance.
So we don't have to have this in place until March 1st?
You don't have to have it in place when the model comes out, but I think it's strongly, it would be strongly advisable when it comes out, the model policy, that we look at it, and if it's something that meets all what the statute says, then we probably should come back and pass, amend this and adopt the model policy and attach a copy to it. If we want to make some changes, we can make some changes. You don't have to have this at all. What I'm saying is, if you don't, and this happens to come up, we'd be missing a chance to have immunity from paying any dollars versus having to pay whatever the judgment comes down that it might be.
Immunity from a employee?
An employee's lawsuit, yes, ma'am.
Are you saying that until we get that done, we're going to be having a cause for vicarious liability without the policy in effect?
That's correct. And the private entities don't have, they can't do that. Of course, again, this would be something that would have to be defended by TML, but, you know, if we've got something to go on, let's give them something to defend us with.
Just to go along with the kind of question I think the mayor's asking is, when does the state say that we have to have this by?
They don't, they don't say, and they're not going to say.
But is it in effect today?
Pardon me?
Is it in effect today?
Yes.
Okay, that's the two questions. Go ahead and take an action now?
Right, we take an action now to tide us over to when the model comes out. You don't ever have to pass it, but you're going to, you're going to forever have the potential of a lawsuit. Hopefully, we never have it. But I just want to put you in the best position you can be in.
Well, and even better, having a policy against anti-bullying. Obviously, it must go on, or they wouldn't have it, so.
I can assure you, it goes on. I have personal knowledge that it goes on. I get abused every day.
Blair, should we move forward and make a motion, or it just?
It's just like, it's just like.
Make a motion to move forward with the resolution to be brought back to us?
Well, when I get that policy, I'll bring it back to you.
That's clear.
Absolutely.
We just not approve anything filed tonight, is what I'm asking for.
Yeah, that's, it's in the, it's in the form it needs to be in. It'll have, it'll have to have two readings. It's like any other ordinance, when the model policy comes out, you either can repeal this one or just.
Well, my motion would be to move forward with the resolution.
Yeah.
Second.
Or with the ordinance.
With the ordinance, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, he said a motion.
We're through. We're ready.
We have a motion in a second for, would you restate the motion?
Vice Mayor Johnson just read the caption of the ordinance and made a motion for approval and seconded.
I think you want to discuss or take action on Bill number 2014-31, ordinance number 853, an ordinance to aid in establishing a healthy workplace for the employees of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by addition to the municipal code Title IV, the new chapter and section, Chapter 5, Section 5-101, Healthy Workplace. That's it.
As written by the attorney.
This indemnifies the city of Fairview from an employee suit.
No, ma'am. It gives you immunity.
Immunity.
If a suit was filed and you have this in place and Mr. Hall's interim policy type thing, then the action that would be taken by the attorneys for TML, and I've never had one of these, that when the city got sued, that I worked very closely with the TML, the first motion would be to do, of course, your investigation to see that the city wasn't involved in any prohibited way, and then you put down a motion to dismiss.
And this is between the employees and the employer, city of Fairview?
Right. You put down a motion to dismiss, and the court either grants a motion to dismiss or they deny it. And if they deny it, the suit goes on. Further than your next, next thing would be on behalf of the city is to put down a motion for summary, do your discovery and then put down a motion for summary judgment. And one of those two, you'd be dismissed out of the suit. That's my, that's my thinking. I can't guarantee that. But if we don't have that, then lawsuits between employees and employees of the government and the government have been, the immunity has been removed from lawsuits under, on the Tort Claims Liability Act. And that means you would go, they couldn't recover more than the maximum under the Tort Claims Liability Act. They only remove immunity up to the maximum payment of, under the Tort Claims Liability Act, and as it stands today, I think that's $600,000. So it could save you a lot of money and a lot of heartache.
Other discussion?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since we are in the process of redoing the procedures in the policy handbook, is not conclusion in that procedures and policies handbook accomplish the same thing, or not?
Absolutely, and that's what Mr. Hall and I had talked about earlier, that once this model policy comes out, it's adopted, then we'll adopt it by ordinance, and you include that in your policies and procedures manual. The reason I wanted to go ahead and take this route, policy procedures manual has to be approved by the board. No disrespect to the board, but we can't get this done to start covering this as soon as this is passed. We might even be able, since nothing has been, this has not been tried anywhere, but if you've got the legislation in place, there's, under the theory of legislation pending, if it's passed on first reading tonight and you've got a suit tomorrow, we could argue that it's legislation pending, so we're trying to comply with the tenor of the legislative act, and lawsuits have been dismissed on other, in other areas because of legislation pending. I'm not picking on the board, but we can't, we can't do that as fast as we can do this.
This doesn't cover the board?
The board's immune under another statute.
And that was what my next question was.
Members of boards, unless you're an active participant in it, and I'm not trying to lecture you, but if I'm an active participant, nothing's going to protect me, except maybe I can prove I wasn't there. But the board, as long as they act in furtherance of their being a board member, then they're immune from statute, period, just walk.
Official capacity.
Yeah. Now, if you go outside your official capacity, the scope of, of board member and this kind of thing, then you're denied that coverage. But if you make a mistake as a board member and it's in furtherance of your job on the board and in the capacity that you were elected to do, then you're immune. The fact that you made a mistake, that's exactly what it's there for.
Any other discussion? Thank you.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item M, discuss and or take action on license agreement for Roadscape grant. Mr. Kentrow?
I reviewed the contract, had a couple of questions, got those answered, but reviewed the thing, it's a typical state contract, no real problems with it. The question I had, and it's that way with almost every state contract, it had a date that it started and a date that it ended, and typically, the last person to sign those, which is the state, fills in those dates. That's the way everyone's been done that I've worked with, with the city. But I just want to make sure somebody had changed the policy and I didn't know about it. So Ms. Brandy verified with them that it would be, the dates would be inserted after we sign it, it's sent to the state when they're executing it, they'll fill in those dates.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I would like to say one other thing. I looked through this very carefully two or three times, and typically, the state don't do that, but it's one of the few contracts that I've seen recently that didn't have some provision in there that we would indemnify and hold them harmless even if they made the mistake. And I don't go along with those. I didn't have to in this one.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Discuss, item N, discuss and or take action on services for transparency. I just asked for this to be revisited. Do you have any information, Mr. Johnson, that would want to add to the presentation?
I do not own the OpenGov site. We are trying to get it scheduled into his schedule when he can be here and give us a presentation.
The information that was sent out was, as I shared, it was an unsolicited informational. I believe that it wasn't apples to apples after I reviewed a little bit, but I did want to see if anyone had any comments on any of the information or questions we need to be gathering for OpenGov's presentation.
Mayor, I've got a couple of things. The information you sent out, I did review, and I don't think they're provide the same level of service. I think there are three factors that in evaluating whether or not we want to spend this money. The first, the first one is repetitiveness of input. One of the things that I think's very important is that whatever, if we adopt the OpenGov system, that data only has to be put in one time, that the system itself, the software, delivers it in whatever delivery formats that we want, that we don't have to go back in and do manual transfers or those type things to generate what we want to post on the website or what we want to give people direct access to, or what our, our staff wants, or what Tom needs. It needs to be very user-friendly, per se. Needs to be, needs to be like that. I, second of all, am anxious to see the presentation because I think, I think real-time decision-making is very important to us in terms of the plan that we have laid out for the future. Right now, we typically make decisions based upon something that's going to occur over the next week or two, or it takes a couple of weeks for invoices to come in and that sort of thing. And Tom has made some positive changes to how stuff is loaded, but we still don't have the ability, I don't think, for all of our management team in the city to be able to go over and say, I had an allocation of $1,000, I still have $632.41 left, and that includes the invoice that I sent to Tom yesterday. So that it's actual real-time data for them to make appropriate management decisions. I think, I think that's very important. And then, and then the last item, I suppose, is the, is the reliability of the system. I think we, if we're going to put our eggs in this basket, the system has to work. We can't have a lot of downtime, we can't have a lot of bugs to be fixed. They've been in business quite some time, and those type things should be worked out. But anytime you implement a new system, there's always some bugs. So in evaluating, what I'm looking forward to seeing, and I'm hopeful that when they do make the presentation, I'll be able to attend, but those are the three things that I think are most important to us.
We're not having enough information. Would there be no action? And the presentation, is that something that is being requested for scheduling at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right. Next item is city manager comments.
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, board of commissioners. Mentioning policy and procedures, that is something that we'll be working on, and hopefully to finalize it either late winter or early spring. One thing that I do have in mind to get done, Tom has already received a person's name of them task that can help us with this. I want to have a meeting with the entire workforce regarding customer relationship, citizen relationship, teamwork as employees to employee. This is, I think, critical, and I think will be a positive step for the future of our city's services. That is one thing that will be in the Policy and Procedures Manual, as well as what Attorney, Mr. Kentrell, went over a few minutes ago. We have several other items that we will be putting in the Policy and Procedures Manual, and hope to bring that to the board either late winter or early spring. This is one thing that I have on my mind, it's on my heart as well. We have a dangerous situation, in my opinion, at the elementary playground, where we have, the cyclone fence is four feet from the pavement, at one area, six feet at the most. Children are playing there all during the day. One thing that brought it more to our attention was Frank and Tom and myself had gone to lunch, and we drove by there, I just wanted to show them how close it was. We had several children with their backs up to the, to the cyclone fence. One vehicle could have wiped out several children. I have already been talking to Ken Peterson, our school board representative, about getting permission to put a barrier of some sort around a guardrail or something. So we haven't been able to accomplish that just yet, but it is in the works. I think yesterday or the day before, the day that it rained, I've forgotten which day now, we did put down, put up two new signs, reading slow, "Our children at play with a red heart. We love our children." Hoping that every little thing we can do right now until we can get permission to take care of this situation, whether the city has to pay for it, or the, hopefully, the school board will take care of it, but a guardrail or something there. So I just want to let the citizens know that we're trying to do our best to get that playground protected. It is, I realize we've got a speed limit there of 15, but all during the day, there's children out there at recess. And on the good days, I know we're getting into bad, bad weather, but on the good days, they're out at recess.
Can I, can I add to that? We talked to Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Yes.
Several months ago, and he is trying to work with us through the, I think, the highway department?
Right.
To help assist us in that, but we just haven't got anything back, am I right?
Nothing back yet.
But, that's, thank you.
We're, we're doing our best to get something back, and right now, it's just a temporary sign up there, but hopefully, it'll help slow some people down. Commissioner Carroll, I want to congratulate you on being our new mayor. I very much look forward to working with you. Commissioner-elect Shannon Crutcher, I look forward to working with you, and congratulations on your victory. Mayor Tati, it's been a pleasure working with you. I hope your future endeavors go well. And one thing I will ask right now, are you, will you be here on the 20th?
I'm waiting for the script to be told of what happens next.
Well, I don't, you may have to call the meeting to order, but.
In my recollection of the time four years ago, is we called the meeting, the agenda had the swearing-in?
Yes.
And at that point, it was a giving of the gavel, and the completion of the meeting was with the new mayor.
I don't want to give away the reason, but I do request you be there.
Yes, sir, I expected that that, if it was certified, that that, what I went through in November on my first time would be what we do next meeting.
Okay.
I have heard that it's supposed to be certified by the 17th, I don't know if anybody's heard anything else or not.
That's the word I have come to in the election question yesterday.
Okay, I, I was waiting on someone to say it's officially certified, and at that point, the agenda would have, somebody said it could be the end of November or the first of December, so I was just waiting on timeframe. So yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, any other staff comments? City manager, city attorney?
Thank you, mayor. I don't want to interrupt Mr. Hall while he was talking, but you're, you're absolutely correct. The outgoing mayor about passing the gavel, that's not required, but if you want to do that, that's fine. But I think it's, it's a good symbol, symbol of passing of, of mayor jobs. But that, that doesn't have to be, but the outgoing mayor would have to call the meeting to order, because the new mayor would not have any authority until she's sworn in. The people, by the charter, the people that are in those seats, if they get December 15th, you, those people that are elected and are sitting at that time, sit with full authority to that position until the election is certified and their replacements are sworn in. I don't know what Mr. Hall was had in, in mind, I wouldn't ask him, because it's not any of my business, but he did ask me if I knew a place I could get some eggs.
We have an omelet, I love omelets. Bacon and cheese is my favorite.
That was just my feeble attempt at humor. I know, I, I do have, I do appreciate the opportunity to have worked with the sitting members and the ones that are not coming back. I appreciate working with you, and hopefully, I may have been some help to you, especially early in the game. But please don't worry about the, the request for the eggs, that wasn't made, that was just my humor. Maybe, maybe sick humor. But congratulations to all those who were elected, and again, I appreciate the effort that, that you put forth, and, and the effort that we have been able to work together, hopefully, to the benefit of the city. The, I want to thank the board again for passing the anti-bullying statute, because I just couldn't imagine us sitting here in that, that position and not at least having made some effort to, to cover us as, as best we can until this comes out. And I feel confident with what we've got, but I can't guarantee anything. I also want to thank the staff for the way we worked together on this loan agreement. I want to thank the people at, at the bank, they've been very easy to work with, including the attorney that they hired. This loan agreement was truly a team effort. I think the people that has worked on it the most with me was, was probably Brandy and Mr. Tom. But I think either one of them would tell you that doing this whole thing by yourself and not being able to depend on some other people who had more knowledge in, in finances than I do, and I'm sure with them working with the thing that I had, I hope, more legal knowledge than they did of what we had to come up with, but working as a team. And it wasn't just them, the, like I said, the bank employees that I've worked with on this thing were very forthcoming with any information that I needed. It wasn't a thing of like, you know, this is mine, and don't you mess with it, that's the way I did it, and leave it alone. Things usually don't go too well when you take that attitude, and you don't usually get that attitude back if you don't display that kind of an attitude. So in, in closing, I thank everybody that, that worked on that, and I think it'll work out really good for the city. And that's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. Any other staff comments this evening? Communication from the commissioners, Commissioner Bussell?
Thank you, mayor, just a couple of things. One, I would request that the city manager pass the city attorney to look into how we can get a consent agenda. Those half dozen items that we had to read, other cities use a consent agenda, and that stuff goes like that. So I, I don't, I, I don't know what the steps are involved, but I would like to get a presentation on how we could enact a consent agenda and get rid of a number of the perfunctory items very quickly. The second thing is, I would like to congratulate Mayor-elect Patty Carroll. Ew, I apologize. Mayor-elect Carroll and Commissioner-elect Shannon Crutcher. I look forward to working with them for the next couple of years, at least, that's when my term runs out. And I would like to thank Mayor Tati for her service. Until you have had the distinct honor and privilege of serving up here, you have no earthly idea what it takes to, to, and she has applied a lot of energy and a lot of effort, and as I have told her personally, I believe she has gotten us into conversations and on the map with places and things and efforts that, that we would not be there had she not been here and had not such an energetic viewpoint as our ambassador. So on behalf of myself, as a fellow board member and as a citizen, thank you for your service. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Sutton?
I want to concur with Commissioner Bussell on the job that you've done. I'll have a lot more to say about that during the swearing-in ceremony. I just want to thank you for your services the last four years. You have worked very hard, very diligent to move us forward, and we've opened up a lot of doors since you've been here. So I want to tell you, I appreciate it. Mayor-elect Carroll, I've already sent you a message and spoke to you. Congratulations, looking forward to working with you. Shannon, I've already spoke with you and told you I'm looking forward to working with you, and I think it's a great opportunity for the city. And as Commissioner Bussell said, until you serve up here, you have no clue what it is. Until you run for office, you have no clue. I'm sure exceeded all your expectations of what, you're going like this, yeah? Of what, what it took to run for an office and get into an office, and, and what the sacrifices that not only you, but your families have to make. I want to congratulate Jeff and Frank also on their efforts to run for office. We need more people to do that and step forward, and I've asked each, both of them to not step away, but step into the functions of the city and, and come and help us get in touch with that. So with that, I, I appreciate y'all's efforts in running for office, I really do, because I've, I've done it a few times. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, mayor. I will go ahead and echo their comments to you as well. Thank you for, for serving over the last four years, and thank you for allowing me to serve as your vice mayor for the last two years, and we will, we will definitely miss you. I guess I will be here for another two more years, and we know that you're not gonna completely walk away. I'm sure you will be able to lend a helping hand if, if we called on it, so I'm sure you would be willing to do that. Commissioner Carroll, mayor-elect, congratulations.
Thank you.
You, you won that thing in a landslide. I'm proud of you, and I look forward to you leading our city over the next four years. Commissioner-elect Crutcher, look forward to serving with you. Maybe we can play some golf, like the old days. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner, Mayor-elect Carroll?
Wow, that does sound weird, but I didn't expect to do this tonight, so I, it's probably gonna save a lot of time. But originally, the thought of doing this without you was just hard to imagine, because so much of this has been your spirit and your character, and just you've, you've just been a great leader, wanting to go out, reach out to the community, and reach out to the county, and you just have done an excellent job. I'm sure I might add more next week, with trying not to get too mushy, but the thought of you not being here is just hard to imagine. I'm excited to have Shannon Crutcher join the team. I look forward to working with the board members, vice mayor. I know elections are hard and the race, we didn't ask for, you know, a lot of the things that went on, they did, but you know, I appreciate that, you know, we could always know that in the end that we would work together, and if I did get to stay on the board, which that's exciting to me, if I did, if I was here, that we would work together and our relationships would not be severed by a race. So I appreciate that. I look forward to serving the citizens. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for believing me, in me, and it really means the world, and I hope to make you proud. And we have a wonderful town, we have a bright future, and we have a great board that will be committed to work together for you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I don't have a speech prepared, and I don't think it's necessary. The only thing I do want to say is that I'm honored to have served. I do have a servant heart, I will continue to serve, as I have for 30 years in this community that I call home. I'm very grateful for the opportunity that the citizens gave me to lead as the mayor of the last four years, and I have taken it very seriously, and I have tried my very best to stay abreast of the information, as well as to move the city forward in ways that I feel the citizens have looked as their goals and their dreams. It's been an amazing experience, a lot of learning, a lot of learning on the fly, but that's also very exciting. It's been an exciting four years, and I look forward to continuing to serving the community in other ways. And I just want to thank you for being the community that you are, as we pull together and we move forward. God bless all of you. Take a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, thank you.